All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you would take your roll call.
Okay, Mr. Luther.
Here.
Ms. Nelson.
Here.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Present.
Mr. Washington.
Present.
Mr. West. And Mr. Combs.
Present.
Seven council members present and one absent.
And at this time Pastor Weepson is here to do our invocation.
Let us pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings of this day and for a break from the intense humidity that's been with us the last two to three weeks, very intense. And just a few degrees and less temperature, it really makes our life much more livable and a blessing. Especially do I pray that for our citizenry here who have to work on the streets doing this infrastructure work and all of our city employees who are bound to this heat throughout the day and in the night for our emergency services and first responders. Thank you, Lord, for giving us an impasse from the intense heat. I want to thank you, Lord, for those that serve this city every day and the night and I thank you for our administrators and our mayor, council persons, and all of those who lead departments, clear out to the boots that are on the ground every day to take care of we, the people, and keep our families safe. I lift up our nation tonight and the continued perpetual violence that we experience. Lord, I've always believed and still do that we're better than what we're seeing and we really need your leadership and guidance to help us through the unnecessary suffering that happens almost daily. And we must be vigilant and prayerful and mindful that you are the only answer to the woes of men. I pray for this session tonight and for all issues that will be discussed and any decisions that are made, we pray, all of us in this sanctuary pray that they will be pleasing to you. I'm always grateful, Lord, for the community that participates in government. They make us all stronger and better and we, the people, do greater work when we do it together. Finally, in this prayer, I pray for anyone within the city family who would be bereaved, be struggling with physical illness or affliction or both, that you comfort and touch and guide them and give healing where it is your will and will be grateful to you for it, all of us together, through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Face the flag.
Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor.
Pray, sir.
Okay, before we get rolling tonight, we do have a special recognition of one of our longtime employees that's going to be leaving us. And Michelle, if you would come up, we just have a couple of things to say. I know Renee has some comments and just I'd briefly would just like to say thank you for your years of service. I know when you work at a job for as long as you have, you want to leave the place better than you can. And you've had a great impact on our employees and you definitely fill that role in a great capacity. So I appreciate the great impact.
Ash, thank you. It's been a wonderful workplace and I appreciate the opportunity and my family and I have been greatly blessed by being working here. And I couldn't ask for a nicer group of people to work with, so thank you.
So Michelle, you know, I've not known you that long. I think our first engagement was in January of this year. And I just would like to say thank you so much for everything that I've seen since having this short period of time to work with you. And you know, I told you, I'm your biggest cheerleader, so I'm looking forward to hearing about the updates for your studies and when your thesis is conferred and, you know, and I'm so serious, I'm very proud of you. I think that the empowerment of others is very important. And I support you, we all support you. And I just want you to know, you go girl. Do your thing, do your thing and just continue being the best version of yourself.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The mayor has something for you. We have a little token of appreciation for you.
We also have a special.
We'll start with you.
Mayor, you want to read it to her? So everybody knows what we say.
Yes, so recognizing Michelle Martin for seven years of dedicated service, eight from 2011 to seven twenty twenty. Michelle, wherever you go, that would be a change.
Yeah, one more surprise for you.
I'm a little scared. Okay, you're on.
Hi, everybody, this is Bill. I just want to say what an honor it is for me to be able to say a few words tonight and just wanted to say hi to y'all from Texas. Being able to watch our first grandchild grow and develop every day has been a true blessing to myself and my wife and lets you all that I miss you all very much. Maybe I don't miss the job, but I do miss the people. Wow. Michelle, saying the city will miss you is such an understatement. I had the privilege of working with Michelle for many, many years. I really felt like we were an excellent team and that we worked together very well. Michelle had to walk a very fine line in her position. It was both her job to look out for the city's best interest and the administration as well as being advocate for all the city employees. She successfully walked that line. I can say that she knew every one of the 170 city employees. Made it part of her job to not only know them as employees, but to know them as people as well. I trusted Michelle completely and believed the other. Michelle realized that the city's greatest asset and resource was the staff. It was her goal to treat everyone fairly, equally and with respect. It sounds like a cliche to say Michelle leaving is the city's loss and William Woods hate, but I believe it is true. She leaves being a department of one herself and being a department as supervisor with staff. William Woods also has such a great reputation in the community, it's going to be a wonderful place to work, to work. I am excited for her and this new opportunity. Many times I would stick my head in her office and ask if she needed anything. Sometimes she would say yes and sometimes she would say no, but either way, I knew I could get a piece of chocolate out of her candy dish. Michelle, best wishes and congratulations and once again, thank everyone for allowing me to be a part of this event.
Thank you so much.
All right, very good. That was pretty cool.
Yeah, in many ways.
It was, you know, technology. Thank you. Thank you all and thank you, Michelle. Okay, next up, we have comments from visitors. If you'd like to speak to the council, just step up to the podium, give us your name, your address, and keep your comments to five minutes or less, please.
Good evening. I'm Tim Rickerson, I'm the president of the Fulton Disc Golf Club.
Mr. Rickerson, I don't mean to interrupt you, we actually have you on the regular agenda, so you're coming up really soon.
Oh, I have something.
But you have a special spot.
Okay.
So, hold that thought.
You're not so special.
Really appreciate that, Jeff, very much. For those who don't know me, I'm Kent Wood, I'm the president of the Callaway County Sewer District. Just want to come up and address everyone tonight and just say that it's really great to be able to work with you guys. We've got a couple of projects that we're trying to work together and trying to get through and since November, we've all been dragged out different ways. Whenever, during Bill's departure and Ms. Tyler's coming on board, we've all had those growing pains in between and we've got a really exciting South Fulton project that both of us, as far as the city and Callaway County Sewer District goes, that we're looking at that where we can work together as a community to improve water quality, to improve the entire area of the south end of Fulton out there. And when I say south end, I'm talking about along Route H, all the way from where the new proposed industrial park is back end and then everything that we've got out there as well. We currently, as far as the district, we operate the CNC plant, a little wastewater plant that's just down below the Quick Shop out there below the old Seventy-Six Motel. Everybody know where that one's at. Red Maples, we own, we don't own, but we operate and maintain the Red Maples wastewater treatment system, Country Living, and we just are taking on the Callaway Christian Church out there. So, as we're doing all these things, we had talked about and started working on a project where the city of Fulton and ourselves would combine forces to be able to basically take out seven different discharging systems throughout that entire area out there and bring it into the city of Fulton. We would become your customer, we would do our own billing out to everyone else that's out there, but we would become your customer and would love to do that, really would. Yeah, I think it would be such a positive thing for the city and for the sewer district to be able to get this accomplished. So, tonight, I'm just basically here to say, thanks for working with us, we hope to have a great future. We really want to sit down and meet about this and keep this thing going because the possibilities are really, I don't want to say endless, but they're getting bigger and bigger. As Callaway Electric also has just bought some additional properties out there and they're going to be looking for services as well. We can work together, if we can bring this all together and make it work for not only the city's benefit, but for ours as well, we're all about it. Everyone's always welcome out at our place. We bought the old Vans Garage, Kingdom City, fifty-five, seventeen, oh, forty. You're welcome to come by anytime, we're always there. Currently, just a little bit about us, we have fourteen wastewater treatment facilities that we are either owning or owning and operating and we're also operating and maintaining the Kingdom City lagoon system out there for them. Great partnership there. So as we can continue to go forward, we really want to keep this ball rolling with us. We are going to be partnering with the city of New Bloomfield to put in a big pump station over there. Everything works out accordingly with the, with ARPA, with SRF and with everything else that's out there. That project would then tie that small town into Holt Summit, which eventually would get into Jefferson City. So we're going to be eliminating a lot of discharging systems by doing that. We're also working on a big system out in Millersburg, be eliminating many of our systems that we have out there, individual subdivisions that we own and operate out there as far as wastewater treatment systems. So again, just to come by and say hello and let you guys know that we're interested in working side by side with you. We want to make things positive for both sides and we want to do it as efficiently as we can. I know the wastewater treatment plant, you're going to have to be doing some upgrades, we want to be there along with that. So, I just want to thank you for your time, I know mine's just about up, but I want to thank you for your time and everything else. Always welcome to give me a call. Courtney for sure knows how to get ahold of me and some of the Jeffs.
Certainly do, sir, I certainly do.
Thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you, Karen. Okay. All right, thank you for that. Anybody else that would like to address the council? All right, seeing no one come forward, I'll move on. Next up, we have our approval of the consent agenda. Council members may choose to remove an item for discussion prior to approving the agenda. We have a full plate tonight and I'll just run down through them. We have the reappointment of Dan Healy to the Board of Adjustment for a five-year term. The appointment of Shad Salmons to the Board of Adjustment for a five-year term. Reappointment of Frances Vaughn to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term. The reappointment of Adrian Lindsay to the Human Rights Commission for a three-year term. The reappointment of Robert Wilson to the Park Board for a three-year term. The reappointment of Wayne Bill to the Park Board for a three-year term. The reappointment of Les Hudson to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term. The reappointment of Joan Barry Morris to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term. The reappointment of Ken McSwain to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term. The reappointment of Jeremy Washington to the Planning and Zoning for a three-year term. And the appointment of Brooke Bartlett to the Planning and Zoning for a one-year term. And I would just say that the difference in the length of terms is we're trying to adjust the expiration dates to better.
Stagger.
Stagger, there you go, thank you. Better stagger the appointment dates and not have huge gaps and big turnovers, so that's the reason that that's that way. The action by state law, you should recuse yourself from voting on the appointment of any family member within the fourth degree of consecuability or affinity. So if you fail to recuse yourself, you immediately forfeit your elected position. So be very careful if you know any of these people that you think you might be related to, just if you would recuse yourself at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself before the vote, I'll go Jeremy Washington.
Very good. And if there's no others, we can just recuse you from the vote on the consent agenda. If no one's pulling that off, I would entertain a motion for that, to approve that.
I make a motion, we pass the consent agenda as written.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Councilman Washington has recused himself in this vote. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good, thank you all very much. Okay, next up, we do not have unfinished business. Tonight's new business, we have Tim Rickerson here, the president of the Fulton Disc Club. There's your time.
Thank you all very much. So, I'll give you a little bit of backstory. Fulton Disc Golf Club's been in operation for, I think, five plus years, five or six years now. And we've, our main goal as a club is to really get community involvement, introduce new people to the game and just kind of grow the sport in this community. This year, and just to kind of give you some stats of where we are, we run like an annual, our weekly Sunday league. For example, we've been averaging about thirty people. I think our roster for this year's season is somewhere around fifty-seven people. So, our big goals for this year has been kind of, you know, trying to make sure the course looks really great and get any final pieces for the course. And we've been working with Clay Caswell a lot, he's been, you know, extremely helpful and it's been a great relationship with him. Our big goal for this year is to host a sanctioned PDGA disc golf tournament, a C-tier event. And so, we're hoping to host it August twentieth and use the Veterans Park Disc Golf Course as the location for it. We think this is really our next big step in kind of growing the disc golf community in Fulton. And so we've sanctioned with the PDGA, we've provided proof of insurance for the event to handle all that. One of the big things that we are also needing in addition to being able to do this event is we also need a vendor onsite. This is usually a disc golf business and the vendor is for rewards for our amateur players who win in their divisions. So we've got an advanced division, an intermediate, a recreational, amateur forty-plus, fifty-plus, sixty-plus division, women's intermediate, women's recreational. They, open players, they can win actual like cash prizes, whereas amateurs do not. They only ever win like funny money or vouchers that they're able to use for whatever business is vending at the event. And so we print off little voucher cards and then they can use that at that event. The reason we need the vendor onsite is so that they have the ability to kind of pick and choose what merchandise they would like to receive as their prize for winning their division and their tournament. We've reached out to a Columbia business, Show Me Disc Sports, which is based on the north side-ish of Columbia, owned by George Smith. He's also a local pro disc golfer, he's actually touring, he's playing a masters tournament somewhere right now, that he has agreed to be onsite if permission was given to be able to vend for this event at Veterans Park. So that's why we were here, to seek your approval. Yes?
Is the vendor also going to be selling to the public or is it only for the voucher exchange?
It's usually only for the voucher exchange. The only addition, like some, the participants who play in the tournament sometimes might also purchase some additional merchandise as well. But usually when you go to these events, now I know like we're not going to close the park off to anybody or anything like that, but usually in other places, the course itself is either closed for that day or it's in a remote enough location that you don't see many other publics. So it's usually, it's really just geared towards those participants. There are times where might maybe, you know, the public might come and want to buy something, but that's not as common, it's really just for the participants. They may purchase some additional discs, but otherwise, that's usually the trend.
How many people do you anticipate participating?
Well, we've capped the event at seventy-two, really just for the sake of, we didn't, we didn't want, I mean, seventy-two will be pretty heavily populated in the park, but we didn't want to make it to where it was, it became a detriment to the flow of the tournament trying to put five people on the card. We're currently at thirty-one, which I'm actually really happy about, though usually the way that the tournaments fill is when one first shows up, you'll have, I don't know, fifteen to twenty people sign up relatively early, but it's usually in the last couple weeks before the event closes registration that people sign up. So we're at a healthy number right now. I talked, a lot of our league participants come from Colombia and Jeff City and Mexico and so I've been sort of putting it in their ear as well to talk to their friends to sign up too.
What's the time from start to finish?
We will set up at about eight in the morning. We're going to rent one of the large pavilions. Registration usually goes from about eight to nine, round one starts at nine-thirty. Usually takes about two hours. Because this course is somewhat sort of compact in that area, it's, I think it's roughly fifty-four hundred square feet is the course. I believe most people will be able to finish around about two hours. We do about an hour for lunch. Round two usually starts, I think we'll be Round two usually starts, I think we'll be able to start it between one and one-thirty, and I think we usually have things wrapped up about four to four-thirty.
And Clay, would you have any issues or concerns about any of this? I mean, it sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Clay Caswell, Parks and Rec Director. No, we don't have any concerns. Fulton Disc Golf Club's been very good to work with over the years. You know, they help us maintain some of the small areas of the course. If there's ever a problem out on the course, they let us know. So I think it's a good event. It's going to bring people to this community. They're going to eat lunch.
At local businesses.
So I think it'd be good for the community, and I think it'd be a great event.
One thing about the Disc Club, they, like the Brick District, you guys have skin in the game. You do a lot for the park itself, and you never ask for hardly anything. So I appreciate what you guys do out there. It's wonderful.
Well, we appreciate being here. We very much try to, if we want to be able to have something for ourselves as a club, we want to put ourselves into it. We don't want to just ask for things from other people. We want to put the work in. So yeah, that's something we're always willing to do. So anytime, we do a charity tournament each year, our Ice Bowl in the winter. It's actually something that started in Colombia. They've done it for thirty-plus years. We've done it, I think we're on our eighth or ninth year. We've, in the last five years, we've been able to donate a thousand dollars each year to our house. So we do that every winter. We've done some youth clinics recently as well. We're actually looking to do some more this year. So yeah, anytime there's opportunities for us to be involved in the community with anything, we love to do that. Absolutely.
Do you work with Parks and Rec on the clinics?
We haven't yet, I don't think. I think we did a youth one this last year. We just kind of advertised. We did actually reach out for some resources about where we could get some information and post it on the Parks page. Clay has actually inquired with us about doing another one this year, possibly using the Recplex for that purpose and doing some clinics.
That's great.
I think the, a group that does some youth stuff for the YMCA or something has reached out to us as well. We haven't heard recently from them, but yeah, we're hoping to put some other stuff together, yeah.
And based on the success of this tournament, is there discussions of expanding the course or future?
We would absolutely love to do this on an annual basis, and we're very much interested in possibly putting another course together at some point. You know, we know it comes down to a matter of having the available space and the funding for it. We've gone through and looked at a couple of places. The one that kind of caught our attention is the acreage that's behind the fire station on Tennyson. I know there are some plans for some other projects out there, and so we actually took an overlay of what some of those other projects might be, and we actually mapped, we actually walked the property and just kind of saw what potential there was, and we actually mapped a little thing around that. There's a couple of other properties we've looked at as well. So yeah, we're always looking forward to more space for another course in the future because we'd love to expand to having two courses to run tournaments. If we can get a course that has maybe the space and the challenge associated with it, you know, then we can run up to higher level events because there are B-tier events, there are A-tier events. And the B tiers are really where, like you get those really competitive players, that really gets their attention. C tiers are oftentimes like more sort of community-based ones. It's the more amateur-oriented, kind of gets people into that, and you try to get like a good pool of pro players. So yeah, if we had more courses and more to work with, and we can kind of elevate what we're able to do, I mean, that'd be phenomenal. We try to, we try to use that at every opportunity to kind of continue growing the community with that. So yeah, that is something we definitely look forward to. That's one of our long-term goals.
Sounds awesome.
Thank you. We've, since its creation, it's really been a great thing, and we keep trying to just make it grow. We want to, we're all about community, we're all about environment. Those are the compliments we get. Everybody who comes to us tells us it's a great environment, and so we just hope to keep promoting that.
Mr. Mayor, are you seeking a motion?
I am, yeah.
And it's just for the vendor involvement, correct? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the permission for the vendor sales in conjunction with the disc golf tournament.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, very good.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up, we have employee retention discussion and recognition. Renee, if you would, tell us what this is all about. It's exciting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, I am proposing to provide an incentive payout to show our appreciation and to boost the morale for our employees. As you all are aware, our staff worked very hard throughout the pandemic. They provided services during one of the most unstable times of our lifetime. While the council has raised starting wages, and this is greatly appreciated, we are experiencing an inflationary rate for the cost of living that is causing working people to choose between purchasing their medicine or putting gas in their car. As you also are aware, the city has received one-point-two-seven million dollars in ARPA funds and is expecting a second round of one-point-two-seven million from the federal government. These funds are not related to the county. The purpose of the funds is to infuse and reinvigorate our communities across the country. I am proposing that we use a small portion of these funds to show support to our full-time employees who have been employed with the city for a minimum of a year. What you may not know is that our mid-salary midpoint, our salary midpoint is thirty-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars. The following is a proposal for our employees. Employees making up to forty-five thousand dollars would receive a payout of fifteen-hundred dollars. Employees making forty-five thousand and one dollars to seventy thousand would receive one thousand dollars. And those making seventy thousand and one dollar and up would receive five hundred dollars. We are looking at a total incentive of a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars for our employees.
And with regard to the one-point-two-seven, that's sort of a drop in the bucket, but it's a way to show that the city appreciates the loyalty from this organization that the employees have had. And I think it's a wonderful gesture, and it may not change anyone's life, but it's going to say that we care. So I appreciate the effort that's been put forth on this. The floor is open.
Can I ask one question on that real quick? The money given, is that before or after taxes?
That's before taxes.
So it would be
It has to be taxed.
Significantly less.
It has to be taxed.
Yeah. Sometimes you add that, and then they physically get the fifteen-hundred versus the, like they're going to end up with about eight-hundred bucks.
I wish we could.
Yeah. I was just clarifying because I know sometimes there's math built into that.
And there's been some real work and thought put into this, but I think it's definitely something that would get approved, we think, through the process, the ARPA process.
Well, we already have the one-point. We have approached one.
And it's appropriate use, I think.
It is appropriate use.
Yeah.
This is actually something, I've talked to other municipalities, not only in Missouri, but in other parts of the country. And this is one of the things that people are trying to do. You know, first of all, with the inflation, and you talk about the compression of salaries, we're absolutely in a rock and hard place, and this is not going to alleviate the issue. But with gas being what it is, and just the cost of living, and what we don't want to see is our people, you know, that are struggling feeling as though we are not seeing their pain. There has been nothing done with this ARPA money yet. This would actually be, this would be the first gesture of using some of it. The city hasn't used any of its funds yet.
Can you give us the total number again, Renee?
One-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars.
So how many employees would this impact?
This impacts about approximately one-hundred-and-forty.
And we're offering, or we're suggesting doing this for only full-time?
At this time, yes.
And how many total employees do we have, full-time and part-time? Thank you.
Which shifts.
So you talk about the bonus scale. It's a what, fifteen-hundred for the
The ones paid for.
But that's also our newest employees?
No. You have to be here a year. So if you've not been here a year, you're not getting anything.
Well, I guess typically is that, well, I don't want to do is send the wrong message. If someone has been here twenty years making seventy thousand
We don't have that many people that's been here making seventy thousand.
That would give them less money than the people that have been here making less money.
Well, the people So the people that are making less money, we've had people at the soup kitchen that have been working here a long time. We have, my finance director, if you don't, I won't name any names, we have a person that's worked here for about fourteen years that's not making over forty-five thousand dollars. So traditionally, unfortunately, municipalities have not been really good about catching up. So when you say someone making seventy thousand dollars, I think we probably, and this isn't counting overtime, but salary people, we don't, the majority of our people are not making over seventy thousand dollars. They're hard-working folks, and they are coming to work, and they're smiling, and they're, it's from day to day. And we do have people that are struggling to pay to get their prescriptions, you know, for putting gas in their car or their kids. So again, as the mayor said, this is not, this is not going to be fixed to end it all, but it is something to help boost people, you know, and let them know that we do appreciate them. As we continue to work on looking at our compensation study and trying to work on putting a plan to at least get us on the track to hopefully right-side us, right-side us within the next five years or so. Because it's not going to be fixed, you know.
I love this idea. I think that many of the councilmen who have worked with me in the past have been a huge advocate for our staff, all of them. We have nearly just as many part-time employees as we do full-time, and this might be the second time we've sort of overlooked them. We've given special privileges for the current employees with regard to the Rec Center, and then now we're including them in a bit of an incentive, which is great. Again, I'm not, I'm not downplaying that, but our part-time employees are equally as important, and I would love to see something come up regarding them as well. I mean, if half of our overall staff is part-time, if we were to lose them all, we would be, you know, in serious bit of trouble. So
I think, excuse me, councilwoman, we have a lot of seasonals. That's why I said that number fluctuates. And I am looking at, as I mentioned, Councilwoman Stone, at the last meeting. However, with the seasonals, it would probably, it's going to probably have to make more sense, you gotta stay because I don't want you to come, and you're here two weeks and you leave. So we may have two-hundred-and-seventy-seven people today, and next week it's two-hundred-and-twenty-five. The seasonals.
Rough estimate of the one-thirty-seven, how many of those would you say are seasonal?
Not one-thirty-seven, it's a hundred-and-forty.
Of the part-time?
Full-time that's eligible for this is a hundred-and-forty.
So we have one-thirty-seven part-time. How many of those are seasonal employees?
I don't know, but we can get that information for you if you want.
Would they be getting the amount all at one time, or would it be feasible to break it up over the rest of the year?
It's not a raise.
Like at our office, for instance, we are giving a gas incentive for the, until January because, you know, as of right now, it doesn't look like it's changing. And we're doing a hundred-and-fifty dollars for our employees per month, just that way they don't, you know, spend it on, you know. So it, we are calling it a gas incentive and just breaking it up over the course of, and we're not calling it a raise, we're simply calling it a gas incentive, and then when January comes again, we're going to relook at the numbers and see if that's something that we're going to continue to move forward with. Wasn't sure if it would be better for employees to have something broken up over the months, knowing that that's coming, instead of one lump sum all at one time.
So five-hundred dollars broken up over
Well, and the five-hundred-dollar amount is a little bit different. I was really looking at the fifteen-hundred and a thousand, over six months, five months.
I think the intent is a little different than your situation.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it could be done that way, but I think in this case, most employees don't really get that shot in the arm and that feeling that we care about them and esteem.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I agree. I think it's a lovely incentive, it's a wonderful thing. And I think the same thing, I think you're right. And you're going to have to pay, school starting, go look at the price of backpacks right now. You've got two kids, and you want to buy a backpack, they're twenty-five and thirty dollars to buy a backpack. Go to Walmart and take a look. It's more of them. Give them one shot, I mean, get their kids started back to school with a little more clothes or something, or food or something. I agree, I think one would definitely help.
Well, I'm basically in favor of, I think our, I think our people that work for the city are very special people, and they put in, they put in hard work, and they do a very good job for the city of Fulton. I have any, I don't have any problem supporting the cause. We have this money available that we can use to help, help our staff. I think we ought to. I like the idea of breaking it up, those that are making, you know, a thousand dollars or fifteen-hundred, I like the, if we can break it up into three separate payments or something for whatever, I think that's a good idea because I think people manage their money a little bit better when they don't have it all at one time. But if that's something can be worked out, that's what I feel. If we, one lump sum or work, or break it up, I prefer to break it up. But I would like
We could leave that up to the employee, I mean, I guess, but yeah.
Yeah. I like, I like the incentive to be able to help our staff.
Is it realistic, though, to have one person taking one option and one person breaking it up?
Probably not.
I was going to say, I think it's going to really muddy the water.
Well, that's, that's got to be dealt with, that's, yeah.
I think another consideration is when you're looking at the payroll aspect, of course, from a budgetary standpoint, and for these people, if we break it into separate payments, ideally, you know, that sounds great, but like Mary, Councilwoman Recluse stated, the impact is so much bigger when you're looking at a single payment. When someone can see on their paycheck, you know, hey, I have a boost versus a fifty-dollar difference, especially in a time where gas is high, food is high, things are so volatile right now, and like, again, Councilwoman said, with school coming up, that's a really huge hardship for a lot of families. So I don't get a vote on that. But that, I see what you all are saying, and I believe that was probably the intent with trying to do a single payment, was to give a goodwill gesture and make the biggest impact in one time.
And I don't think we're going to hear complaints about any of that. The way it's tiered, I think it helps the most of the, of the people that are struggling there.
The only negative about breaking it up, even though I said it, break up, is that, man, I'm just thinking about it, when you put it with that salary of that person that month, and you add that extra bonus, it's taxed.
Yeah, right.
It's like, man.
Yeah, I wish we could do it untaxable. I guess we could do it that way, that would impact us more. What would the impact be if we did it? We pay the tax portion, that would be another hundred-thousand-dollar problem, I bet. That would cover.
Director, would you like to come to the, can you please come to the
I think if we focus on, on the words that are used in our agenda, it's an employee retention incentive item. It's not really about budgeting, it's not about the gas incentive, it's not about the different things. It's about recognizing our employees and our more tenured employees for employee retention of what we, what they've done for us over the last two or three years. I think if we focus on that, then that's where it kind of, that's the message that we want to send. I would like to echo that if we do have those tenured, part-time employees, those part-time employees that come to I would like to echo that if we do have those tenured, part-time employees, those part-time employees that, that come to us and they work a regular schedule and they've worked for us for more than a year, you know, we have those folks. And if there are a handful of those, I'd like to have them considered, because the seasonals, the ones that work for us just during the summer, the ones that work just for us during the winter, you know, that's not what we're looking for, we're looking for that retention of that, that person that comes to us continually on a schedule, over and over. And so if there are a handful of those part-time employees, I'd like for them to be considered.
And I am working on something, I really am, I'm just telling you that I am, we've been discussing it. To be honest, though, it's like, you know, chopping down a tree. So...
That time coming?
You know, elephant one by one.
One by the time.
I completely understand. Again, some of these incentives are for full-time employees, so, you know, as we gain these incentives for full-time employees, then that part-time employee may consider coming to us. I mean, I, I understand all aspects of it, but again, if, if this specific one is an employee retention incentive, then that should go for that part-time employee that's working for us consistently for a year.
The tax implication to the city would be the FICA and Medicare, seven point six five, which would be about twelve thousand six hundred dollars.
Taxes, Kathy, would be about twelve thousand, you said?
Twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-two, to be exact.
Thank you for that.
Are the arco funds, that is, is it just earmarked, or is it here, or is this, are we spending money before we get it?
No, we, we have had the money since two thousand twenty-one. We have filed our first report justifying the receipt of the money, what we're going to do with it, this is an allowable use. So we will take it out of that bank account. No, we are currently looking at other grants and trying to determine what we'll get out of these other pots before we decide what we're gonna do with this one. I think we have until two thousand twenty-three to spend it, or two thousand twenty-six, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misspoke, two thousand twenty-six. It's from the federal government. Has nothing to do with the money the county's allocating.
So this affects a lot of folks that do a lot for the city. And I believe it's a very appropriate use of this money. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that, full-time...
Make a motion to approve the employee retention. In a second?
We have a motion in a second.
Just really quickly for clarification purposes, for me, you are approving what Ms. Tyler originally proposed with no modification.
No modification, what she's saying.
Okay.
Okay, and again, there's, there's a lot more money on the table between now and twenty twenty-three that we'll be discussing, we'll bring things to you, we, like you said, there's grant opportunities that could exponentially use, you know, this money and, and have it help bigger projects, so, so there's ongoing work towards that.
Are we looking at doing this on the next paycheck?
Um, I'd like to get it before, before September first, but I don't know what paycheck that's, you know, but I, I, ideally, if we could get this before school starts, I think that would be great.
Me too.
So it might not be the next paycheck, but in August, for sure.
Kathy's saying, yeah.
First of August, so yeah, so whatever that first pay period on August.
Do we know the number of employees in each of those different brackets?
I do have a bracket. As of, because it changes, because we've had some folks, you know, leaving and coming. We have, um, as of right now, this writing, have sixty-six that are making up to forty-five thousand dollars. As I said, the median on that is thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. We have fifty-eight people that are in the forty-five thousand and one to seventy thousand range, and there are sixteen people eligible in the seventy thousand dollars and seventy thousand and one dollar and upwards.
The amounts you discussed were fifteen hundred, one thousand, five hundred dollars.
That is correct.
You mentioned the, I understand you mentioned the struggles, right, everyone's feeling, I mean, what's the percentage of inflation up right now? Seven, eight percent inflation? But most people even at fifty-eight thousand, seventy thousand, usually they're, they're kinda still on a budget of some kind. They're paying their bills, they're paying their car payments, they're paying this and that, groceries and everything else is higher. Still struggle with the same, that they only deserve a thousand, not fifty hundred. You know, they're making more money, they probably gotta hire, it costs eleven two. Again, it's, you wanna make sure it's in your own message that because they're making more money, they deserve less, but inflation doesn't hurt them, it's better.
No, that's not the thought process, but right now the thought process, and I understand what you're saying. Um, I'm blessed, I also, everybody has bills, you know, to whom much is given, much is required, and I get that. But right now, we, we have the majority of the people, you know, there is, before you came on council, before I came to the city, it's my understanding, you know, there was a lot of discontent with the percentage of raises, and this is not a raise, but this is just an, an attempt, because, and we can change it now, but that will grossly impact the dollar figure. But this was just a way to try to help those people who we're seeing, we see daily, that we work with, to give, it's, yes, it's tiered, to give people a little bit of hope, a little bit of incentive, as in, again, to let them know that we appreciate them. So I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree, I don't disagree, um, but...
Maybe something for the future, maybe a performance bonus program yearly that the city can look at, based on the city's performance, the budget performance, stuff like that, some kind of annual, maybe going forward longer.
Well...
Something to look forward to and work towards for the year.
I think once we get the findings from our compensation study, which should be starting up, that will be presented to council, we pick the vendor, that will be presented to the next council meeting. Once we have an opportunity to have a database plan, then we can do that, we can absolutely do that. But please be prepared to stick a shot, as I'm telling this, Tom.
Well, um... Are there any other concerns, discussion about this? Hearing none, I would call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good, thank you very much, we'll make this happen very shortly. Okay, next up, strategic planning, and this is my, uh, item that we, we kinda brought it up, and I've had you guys working on this a little bit, Renee has sent out some information about, um, examples of other cities that they've done, we are needing to get this done, and it seems like we'll likely try to have a retreat. And I just wanted to, to get, get the thoughts of the council about what, you know, what your wishes are to, to start working on this. I know I've heard back from, from one of our councilmen, Alan here, sent his thoughts on the needs of the war that he's in, and I know you guys are all probably thinking about those needs, and the needs of the city as a whole, but, I mean, we can set up a time in the next month or so to, uh, to have a retreat, and I, and we'll send an email out, but I just wanted to, to put it on your hearts, been thinking about it, that, uh, I think we, we could do it here locally, we could also, it does have to be a public setting or somewhere where the public could attend if they want to. Generally, these types of things are kind of, um, more or less for the council, but, uh, but any time we meet and talk about city business, have to be eligible for citizens to, to sit in. And how I see it playing out is we kinda come up with our plan, and then before it's all said and done, we would hear from the city, we would present this and get some input from our citizens. And I think that's kinda how MoDOT does it, if they have a project going, they'll come up with a plan and then have some public input.
Does it need to be on the city property, like Recplex, or is it...
It could be, yeah, it could be at the Recplex, I see why it couldn't be. It'd be, um, it'd be plenty, plenty big, I think Clay could accommodate that, we could have a meal catered in. Um, we, I would probably like to do it on a day where our department heads would be available to answer questions. They, they want direction from us, though, you know, we need to set out a plan that we want our, our staff to, to incorporate over the next ten to twenty years, so it needs to be us brainstorming, so I don't know. If it needs to include department heads at this point, it could, it could start with just us, really, honestly.
Are you thinking of an evening or during the day, or what are you?
Probably in the evening, I know when we met to, uh, to do our hiring, that seemed to be the most effective, was to kinda meet after work on a weeknight, that way we're not, um, gonna be messing up vacation plans or weekend plans, we could do it, kinda like we did, did our interviews and that process, maybe come up with an evening or two that, that works. What do you think, Clay, would the, would the meeting room at the Recplex be available for Monday or Tuesday evening? Not a Tuesday, Monday's. I can't remember what night's worked for everybody, but regardless, I'll get an email out and we'll get something going on this. Bottom line, we need to get working on this, because it's gonna take some time. So, and we're overdue with it, so I'll be sending something out and we'll start working on this. Next up, we have council, um, meeting discussions here. We generally have an issue with holidays coming up, and let's try to work this out where it's suitable to everyone. The proposal is to have a meeting September twenty-seventh and cancel the one of thirteenth, is that...
Yeah, so that September meeting, actually, that first one falls during the week of the NML Annual Conference that we'll be attending. Uh, we do this every year, dependent upon when that conference falls. The second one that we always consider is the meeting in December and with the holidays. We typically had been doing the third Tuesday of the month, however, that falls right before the Christmas holidays. So what we're proposing is keeping the second Tuesday of the month, which would be December thirteenth. As in years past, all this would take is just a motion from you guys to make these amendments to our meeting schedule, and we will get everything updated.
Make the motion to accept these changes to the council meeting schedule?
I second it.
I have a question, um, what about the November meeting, is that the same week as Thanksgiving? I know that this is something we've talked about in the past as well.
It is, it is, so it is something I think we actually talk about every single year, but we've never done anything different with it. So that, um, second meeting in November does fall right before Thanksgiving, and we have had issues sometimes getting people here. Administration, we kinda had an internal discussion about whether we would include that in the proposal for you guys. And really, what we were thinking, at least at this time, was we may need that meeting for budgetary purposes. I think it's something that, you know, and Renee, chime in if you feel differently, as we get closer, if we find we aren't necessarily on that time constraint, we could reevaluate, we can change this at any time. Uh, but right now, we think with the compensation study and all of those factors, we, we will likely need that meeting together.
Would it be possible, if we do have low attendings, just to push it back to the twenty-ninth, since we have an extra Tuesday in that one?
Sure, it, it would be possible, we can definitely make any kind of modification like that, and that's where, again, I think as we get a little bit closer, if we see everybody's gonna be gone and we need to modify, we would, of course, get public notice out, that way everybody, everybody's on the same page.
And if it's a, a week like that, we would keep it very minimal, we like in and out. We'll, we'll play that one by year. All right, thank you. Madam Court, do we want a motion on this, I guess?
We actually do have a motion in second on the floor, I think we're ready for a vote.
I was asleep, I guess.
You're good, you're good.
All right, we do have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, next, um, we have council concerns. Council members may discuss matters or concerns not on the agenda. Council liaisons to the city boards and commissions will also provide a brief, a brief review of the most recent meeting. First up, Councilwoman West is not in attendance, our planning and zoning, is there anything to report on that? I don't believe we've had any meetings, so there's nothing to report out on that. Okay, next up, Councilwoman Sebacher.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, no park board meeting since the last council meeting, and just one council concern, the representatives listed on our municipal code page are outdated, since that's a resource for the public, I'd like to see those updated, please.
They are actually actively working on that now, so, but I'll touch base with them.
All right, thanks for touching that. Uh, next up, Councilwoman Reclu.
Yes, uh, the traffic commission, I did not meet, has not met since the last meeting. I went and attended the dedication drive, that was wonderful, that was awesome, I just enjoyed that so much. And, uh, I think, uh, our mayor did a wonderful job, and I, I really enjoyed that. As far as that one, Second Street, looks like the bridge may not, the biz, they're just going out this next, this, 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 state, going out this next eighteenth or nineteenth, just the biz, and so, probably gonna be spring people to see that bridge. The biz and all, they can all, I can't, so, um, I think that's our big unit there. And if that, if that's all, I'm, I'm all right, that's great, so I don't want to go on, but, um, people see the bridge, so, that's my question. That's about it, I have to go tonight.
Thank you for that, yeah, that's gonna be, yeah, it just is what it is. All right, next up, Councilwoman Stone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, historic preservation is not met since the last meeting, we're actually scheduled for next Tuesday, the nineteenth, so I should have an update at the next scheduled council meeting. And then, no concerns, just, uh, thank you to all the work that's being done on Second Street. Uh, Second Street and Ravine intersection was opened, I believe, this morning. I could not use it this morning when I went to work, but I could use it when I came home for dinner, so, um, you know, there's lots and lots of work going on there, and if you've, if you've avoided that section because of the work, I, I recommend that you go by and check it out, I mean, it's absolutely beautiful from, from, I guess it's, is it Bluff Street? Uh, east, uh, that's what the whole thing's gonna look like, and, and as I imagined, it was gonna look a lot like the work that we did on Tenth Street, and it really is, it, it is mirroring that, and it's doing a great job on that, that nature of the block.
Yeah, and even though the bridge isn't gonna be done for a while, that's kind of secondary, I mean, to the bigger picture, so, so the project will basically be more or less, yeah, looking, looking better.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next up, Councilwoman Lither.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there have been no airport advisory board meetings since the last council meeting, no, there's no concerns at this time.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Collins.
Yeah, uh, the Human Rights Commission has not met since last time, and I don't have any concerns tonight either.
Okay, next up, Councilman Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate this opportunity. I want to thank the council for your support of Jack and Brian Way, and on your support of that, I appreciate that. I think, I think Renee, appreciate your support on that. I think, I think Renee, appreciate your support on that and Courtney, all the hard work and the guys that put towards making sure that came to pass. It's, it's, and Kyle, thank you for being there and helping us out and getting behind the program. I really appreciate that and not only that, the community appreciates that. It got so many reports and so many replies about, about that. And I want to just say thank you once again from my heart to you guys. Appreciate your support on that. That was, that was awesome, man.
You had a nice note that was shared with the group too, even though you couldn't be there too, so, yep.
I really feel bad because I had revival that I had to run, so. But that's neither here nor there anyway. I appreciate it. Thank you guys for your support of that.
Absolutely.
A man well deserved.
Yep, definitely. All right, Councilwoman Nelson.
Yes, no utility board updates since the last meeting. There will be another one before the next council meeting, so I'll have an update then. And then again, I just want to reiterate, Second Street, you know, my office is there. I see it every single day. And I just, once again, I know I've said it at every council meeting, I just appreciate those, those workers out on the streets. And, you know, they're just, we see them, we watch them every day from our windows and they are, they are working really hard and I just appreciate our staff so much.
It, it makes you realize what they do when you see it every day.
Yeah, in the heat.
It's a very dangerous job. It's hot, dirty, so, yep.
Yep.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to resolutions. Tonight we have resolution number 3454 and Councilwoman Sebacher, if you would.
Yes, sir. Resolution number 3454, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fulton, Missouri, in support of the Carver School Apartments, a proposed development for senior citizens. I happily make a motion to adopt resolution number 3454 at our council meeting this evening.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We did hear from the developer tonight and we got an update on this project that was supposed to kind of kick off in 2018, but due to pandemic and other things, it's being delayed, but it looks like they have another really good opportunity to make this happen again. So they're asking for the support of the council in, in the capacity of just showing their support, not financial support. It would be part of this, would be donating a small block that the city owns on approval from the MHDC. If it goes through and you get approved for that, we would be donating a little piece of that property. Okay, we, we do have a motion and a second. Is there any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no. Very good. Moving on, we have resolution 3455. If you would, Councilwoman Reclu.
Resolution number 3455, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract on and company of Fifth Street Corner, Georgia. For grant, declaration, and assistance service, I make a motion for resolution number 3455. Passing it out at this time.
Second.
Very good, thank you. We have a motion and a second on the floor and Mr. Dunlap, if you would.
Daryl Dunlap, Super Ten of Utilities. This particular grant is through the federal government on the transportation and it's the natural gas distribution, infrastructure, safety, and modernization grant, long sentence. This one, we was going to try to do, farm it out to somebody to help us because the application process was totally different than the, the grants that's up on the next resolution. There is no match on this grant. This grant is just eligible for city-owned or community-owned gas systems. That's the only people that can receive this money. We talked to two different consulting firms to help us with this. Staff, including Renee, was in the final interviews and staff chose Pond. While you see they're based out of Georgia, the man that's helping us, Ted Christensen, is out of Kansas City. So we do have a, you know, more or less a local person helping us do it. And they quoted, I think, $5,000 to do it and they can meet the timeline of getting this in by the end of July. And we actually had a Zoom call with them today at 1:00 to see all of their information they was needing from us. And it's the I-70 crossing that our transmission line crosses from Hattan to here. For those of you that don't know, our tap on Panhandle is at Hattan and we have about 16 miles of gas transmission that we own. And that's an old crossing on I-70 and it is a safety type grant. And both consultants that we talked to thought it would score very well to get that done. And it estimated cost about 1.3 million is what that board will cost.
And that's what we think the potential on the award is?
The award, we're not touching all the award. The award was like up to 12 million. Okay?
Definitely worth a $5,000 investment. Yeah, we have a great team. This is such a big grant. It's such an important project that it's worth the extra effort.
And that allowed our staff, city staff, to concentrate on the, on the grants from DNR that's due in about a week.
Thank you, Daryl. All right, any other discussion on this item? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All righty, next up, Councilwoman Stone, if you would present resolution 3456.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3456, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to file and sign all necessary documents in relation to an application for grant funding through the Natural Gas Distribution Infrastructure Safety and Modernization Grant Program and make a motion to approve resolution number 3456. It's my turn.
Second.
And this is obviously part of that same discussion?
Yes, so this is actually just, it's not even actually required, but it is authorizing the mayor to sign off on any documents that Pond might need in order to file that application. And it just shows good faith that the, the city council is in support of this project.
Thank you. All right, any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right, moving on. Councilman Collins, if you would present resolution 3457.
Resolution number 3457, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to file and sign all necessary documents in relation to applications with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Financial Assistance State, ARPA, grant programs for subaward of federal financial assistance provided to the state of Missouri by the U.S. Department of the Treasury. I make a motion to adopt resolution number 3457 at tonight's meeting.
Second.
All right, thank you. And if, I don't know who wants to go first, I'm guess, to, to kind of fill us in on what, Daryl, you?
There's several grants here. One of them on the, we'll do the drinking water first. There's one that is for lead service inventory. We're going to be required to that inventory whether we get a grant or not. So that's one reason we filed this one is because we got to do it. And I think it capped at 200,000. And then, and we got an estimate from an engineering firm for like 190,000 to help us with it. And that would, that would also help us communicate with the community of what we was doing and why we was doing it and, and sanity check everything we did. One of the other ones is the ground storage tank. We call it Ground Storage Tank III. It's where the old power plant used to be over there close to Rec Center. That is an in-ground tank. I cannot tell you what year it was built for sure. The well was put in in 1931 and since it starts out as a brick structure and then is lined, I'm, I'm assuming it was put in about 1931. So we have that one to remediate. We have the tanks at, by the Ford dealership to remediate. And then we put one more in for the south end of town by the, what we call the auto farm. That 160 acres that we set aside for industrial. Whenever we fill out applications for industrial lows down there, that seems to be a kicker is we don't have adequate water flow for that industrial site since it's on the very south end of town. And on the wastewater side, there is a, a system we put in for that down there also to put sewer in that area of that intersection to try to get that, get those areas where we can grow, basically. The other one on sewer is dredging the overflow pond. It's the pond as you first arrive at the sewer plant. And it's, this is the one we have heavy storm waters and it diverts to that holding basin. And then after the rain event's over, she pulls it back through the plant. You know, we're getting quite a bit of a sludge blanket in the bottom of it and it probably needs to be dredged. It was identified in 2011 when we did the, the plant upgrade at that time by HDR. And the third one is our lining projects that we've been doing for several years now is to try to go ahead and finish some of the worst parts of town of lining. And then I think that's up to you now, Chief.
Thank you, Daryl.
You've covered most of it, I'd say. And we've got really one, one more application we're doing on the stormwater side and that's up around the William Woods College area and next to our Old City Warehouse Facility, which is a brownfield site. And there, there is just an unsightly drainage area that, that flows kind of, that's bounded by the railroad tracks, the old warehouse site and William Woods University. And unsightly, you know, it has mosquitoes and other vectors and whatnot involved with it. You know, in combination with that, we have our old warehouse site, which I call the Brownfield Site. I went to a Brownfield Conference Monday, actually, to discuss potential, potential of that site and getting that site assessed and hopefully cleaned up eventually through other avenues. This would be kind of a piece of that puzzle though, if we can put a stormwater retention, detention area that, that kind of brings in an aesthetic value to that site, to that area, but also, you know, allows us to control the water in a way that will improve the quality that's, that's, that's flowing through there and, and some of the quantity too. You know, I know as you guys know, if you ever drive through there when it rains a lot, there is, there is backup there and we do have to close the road and whatnot in that area. It's right where that S curve is, basically going across the railroad tracks and, and the old, the old station there, so. So our, our application there is to improve that drainage through, through a detention-retention facility of some sort. So if there's any questions on that, I can.
Thank you, Kyle. And is that all of our discussion? And I think it's all projects that, that obviously benefit all of our citizens. Stormwater and that effect directly, but indirectly it does in a lot of ways. But, but if there's any questions on any of these by all means. And hearing none, I will go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? Very good. Next up, Councilman Washington, if you would present resolution 3458.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3458, a resolution authorizing the mayor on the behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to file the, file and sign all necessary documents in relations to the application for the crosswalk and traffic signal safety improvement. Projects under the Transportation Alternative Fund Program of the Missouri Department of Transportation. I make a motion that we accept the resolution 3458 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second and sorry to have you keep bouncing back up here, but if you don't mind, Mr. Bloom.
Sorry, everyone. Kyle Burma, City Engineer. Yes, excited about this grant application. This is in direct response to a couple of your all's recommendations on improving safety through uncontrolled crosswalks and, and traffic signals. So we have many locations in, in town. Down, down at Bartley Elementary School and right here at Fourth and Fifth Street where we have intersections that are either uncontrolled or controlled in a, in a manner that, that do not facilitate pedestrian traffic as well as they should. So, you know, when, when you're talking about downtown between Fifth and Sixth Street, there's a mid-block crossing that, that we have there. What, what this grant would do, what our application is, is to highlight those areas with, with beacons. There, there are flashing beacons that when somebody presses the button on them, boom, the beacons flash in a, in a kind of a, a manner that really calls your, calls your attention to, hey, there's somebody crossing here. If you've been in other communities, I know Columbia around, around the University of Missouri has several of these. I was down in, in Branson earlier this year and there's a bunch through their main drag. So this, this grant is specifically for pedestrians and we felt that, that this kind of answered that need and there is a need and we're trying to respond to it. See, it's an exciting opportunity to do that. Is it, is there any questions?
What would be the timeline on this, Kyle?
Well, first we would, we'd get the application in and so toward the end of this week, I'll have that application in to MoDOT. And then in about a couple of months, they'll do a kind of interview process where you go and, and communicate about your project and why you think you should get the funds. It's competitive, so there'll be other communities in, in the mid-Missouri region that are, that are battling for their projects. So we'll present and hopefully portray our project well. And because of the, the influx of federal money, there is a little bit more money in this grant, grant process this year than, than normal. So I'm hopeful that, that we'll be able to show our need and demonstrate our need in a way that we can, that we can get it. We are using this grant right now. We've got a, a project that will hopefully eventually go under, get underway down at, along Bartley School, kind of south of Bartley School that is going to be putting sidewalks and whatnot in. This is the same grant we're, we're using down there for the sidewalk portion of that project. So that, that'll hinder us a little bit because we have an active project going on, you know. So whether they say it or not, they kind of like to, you know, as you heard the gentleman earlier say, they like to spread the wealth a little bit, so. But, but I'm hopeful. I think we got a good one.
Part of the reason I ask is if we don't get that grant, we, we probably still be looking at these school crossings and things in the future. Maybe not to the $400,000 level.
Right, right, right. And, and the $400,000 level is, I don't think that we would, we would meet that. That's the, the, the most in the grant that we can apply for. There are, there are easily, there is easily 10 to 15 locations in town, easily, where these can be put. And the, the crossings here at Fourth and Fifth Street are actually very expensive. So between those two and those other sites, there's, there's quite a few. But yeah, it'd be a slow, slower rollout.
I think that the flashing lights are great, especially since we have such a large deaf community here in Fulton. I think that, you know, the more that we have drivers that can see the pedestrian and the more the pedestrian can see to go, the better off we are. So I love that.
Absolutely. All right. Any, any other discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, that'll move forward. Uh, next up, we have ordinances. Uh, second reads tonight, Councilman Luther, if you would present sixteen forty-four.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the cooperative agreement for K-9 basic training services with the Boone County Sheriff's Office. I make a motion to place bill number sixteen forty-four for third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We did hear about this at our last meeting. Um, the only, uh, new information on this is I think we found our new cop, uh, Bo.
Bo is here.
Bo's here, Bo's.
Steve Latwick, you wanna come talk to someone about Bo?
Show us his picture.
Good evening, Bill Latwick, Police Chief. Uh, we do have a new addition to the Police Department. Um, Sunday morning, we left for Pennsylvania, and Monday morning, we were the, at Shadow Creek Kennels, bright and early. Uh, we, uh, basically interviewed five dogs, and, uh, we made a decision on, um, our new officer, Bo. Uh, I think it'll be a, a tremendous addition to the Police Department. We are very excited, and again, thank you for all of your, uh, support for this, and, uh, hopefully soon, late September, first of October, uh, Bo will be deployed.
Lot went into this, and lot is gonna go into this going forward. There's a big commitment on, on our end, but more importantly, it's a big commitment on Officer McCauley.
Officer Will McCauley will be the handler. Um, he's very excited, and he's ready to go, and it, it, it is a big endeavor. Uh, it's going to take a lot of dedication and time, and he is quite prepared and looking forward to it.
Yeah, so, thank you, Officer McCauley. Great job. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. And if you would, again.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to the cooperative agreement for K-9 basic training services with the Boone County Sheriff's Office. I make a motion to place bill number sixteen forty-four for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
All righty, and any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. You've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would take your roll call for final vote.
All right, Ms. Nelson? Yes. Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
All right, seven council members affirmative and one absent.
Excellent, thank you. All right, moving on, uh, Councilman West is not here, and I hate to spring some, uh, Councilman Seabacher, if you would.
Well, wouldn't be the first time.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number sixteen forty-five, an ordinance repealing section forty-two dash one, wards designated, polling places, Fulton City Code, and enacting new legislation in the thereof. I'll make a motion to place bill number fourteen, excuse me, sixteen forty-five for third reading at tonight's meeting. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we did hear about this at our last meeting. Uh, this is, uh, going to adjust the ward line just slightly and give a little bit more parity to the, uh, to the wards. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. And if you would, again, please.
Bill number sixteen forty-five, an ordinance repealing section forty-two dash one, wards designated, polling places, Fulton City Code, and enacting new legislation in the thereof. I make a motion to place bill number sixteen forty-five for final passage.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just one quick question. How exactly are the individuals that are affected with the changes, how are they notified?
So, um, those, basically, once this ordinance is passed, we're required to provide certified copies to the county clerk's office, and then just like any other outreach that the office does for, uh, your polling location, they'll reach out to any of those affected individuals and make sure they're aware of it as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Um, one thing I do wanna be super clear about, I am not, I am not sure if this will affect anyone prior to the August. I'm not sure how her office will choose to address that, um, but it will be up to her office to make that decision.
And that was where my question was coming from?
I imagine, yeah.
Yeah, very good point. Thank you, Clerk, for bringing that up. Okay, motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. And you've all heard the bill read three times. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you would take your roll call for final vote.
All right, Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Seabacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
And Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative and one absent.
Okay, that was it for ordinances. The last item is our announcements. Our next council meeting will be held Tuesday, July twenty-sixth at six thirty P.M. And the MML Annual Conference will be held September eleventh through fourteenth in Osage Beach. And council members, if you would submit your final registration information to our executive assistant no later than July twenty-sixth. And we do not have a need for executive session tonight.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you all. Are these paved streets?